Hello and welcome to Bostonian Wrap. I am your host, Rachel Meiselman. Bostonian Wrap covers all issues from legal, political, and even current events, topical trends. So tonight, I have a very special guest. I have Michael Flaherty, who is a candidate for one of the at-large seats on the Boston City Council. Michael, thank you so much for joining me tonight.
It's great to be here, Rachel. Thank you for inviting me.
Absolutely. Now, this is, as everyone knows, a very exciting time to be running. And I think that, I don't think we've seen so much political energy for at least like maybe a couple decades. And you've had so many candidates who are, at this point, are working at a frenetic pace. Did you ever consider not running for city council?
Obviously, when, well, first of all, it's an exciting year because for the first time in 20 years, we get a chance to elect a new mayor, a new CEO. So I think the thought runs through a lot of people's heads, particularly those that are engaged in the civic process and those that are engaged in politics, often sort of look at different races. So that was clearly a consideration, and I obviously saw an opportunity to get back to service, to public service, through the council, because five members of the Boston City Council decided to run for mayor of Boston, with four of them giving up their seats, and two of them are at-large. So folks may remember, I was a 10-year at-large Boston City Council, five as council president, and also had run for mayor in 2009. And by virtue of the fact that I had stepped up to run for mayor, created, along with Sam Yoon, it created two openings on the Boston City Council that were filled by Ayanna Pressley and Felix Arroyo. Ironically, Felix Arroyo, a couple of years later, decided to run for mayor of Boston. So along with one of the current finalist city councils, John Conley. So that said, there was, I think, a unique opportunity, and when I looked at it, and to see so many changes on the Boston City Council, which is the legislative branch of city government, $2.6 billion budget, schools, public safety.
A lot of people don't think about that.
No, it's a big, and so I said, well, at the time when we're ushering in a new administration, maybe my role to get back to city government would be better served by being an experienced member of the city council, focusing on the legislative branch while we're ushering in a new administration. So I'm excited to be in the race. To your point, there were 19 people running for Boston City Council at-large.
And there were a lot of great candidates.
There were.
It was really hard to, you know, kind of narrow down the choice.
And it was also, it was funny, because a lot of, there was lots of great ideas, and lots of energy and passion, particularly throughout the course of the summer. That said, because there were so many candidates, not just in the at-large race, but also there was a dozen candidates in the mayor's race, so to some degree, the at-large got drowned out by the mayoral race. But a lot of people's ideas didn't really get a chance to be vetted into surface, you know, at the community meetings. And give you an example, we had a candidate forum. All the candidates got a minute and a half to introduce themselves. So of course, 19 candidates.
That's not bad.
The microphone doesn't come back to you for another 27 minutes. Then the first question, I think you got a minute and a half to answer it, so now it's another 27. So you're into the forum for almost an hour, and you've only introduced yourself and answered one question. So it was very difficult because the field was so large. But I can tell you, civic participation was at an all-time high throughout the summer. I can tell you that it was the most diverse field of candidates, both at-large and for the race of mayor, which really sort of goes back to why I think we should have term limits and have a council race that runs coterminous with the mayor's office, because I think it brings out a lot of excitement, a lot of energy and opportunity for candidates. And again, given the civic engagement and giving the diversity, and think about our city, diversity is one of Boston's greatest strengths.
Oh, always.
And to finally see a field of candidates that truly reflect the face of the city was exciting. It was absolutely exciting.
Well, let me kind of like draw a couple of things you said. You know, there's a lot of change that's going to be taking place. And so a lot of people would argue, well, because we've had the same mayor for the past two decades, and the city councilors to whom you refer, just referred, you know, they gave up their seats. Well, some of them had been on the city council for, you know, for a while, at least two or three terms. You know, why don't we just go, just clean house, so to speak? Why don't we just focus on new, fresh ideas? Why don't we just kind of bring in a new energy? What would you say to that? Because some people are thinking along those lines.
Sure. And I'd say with respect to the council, obviously, is the legislative branch of city government designed, at one point, all of the councilors were at-large. And then back in like 1983, they created district representation. But they kept four of the city councilors at-large, citywide, because they wanted to have a system of checks and balances on the strong mayor form of government. So you have district councilors focused on district issues, and then four of them have sort of a citywide base that were really there to, obviously, to be supportive of the administration and their initiatives, but also available to put the brakes on if, you know, the administration ran astray on a particular issue, or the policy decisions were being made were contrary to what the public and what the council wanted. And so I think it was sort of created a healthy system. I would argue, obviously, that at a time when there's new, there's going to be a new administration coming in, keep in mind, which is, this is, it cuts both ways, there's going to be excitement and there's going to be some anxiety.
That's true.
Because we're going to have new cabinet members, new commissioners, new superintendents, new deputy superintendents. So with lots of new blood and sort of new ideas and new energy, I think an experienced member of the council adds tremendous value on the legislative branch of city government side as we usher in a new administration. At the same time, what I'm excited about is, for the first time in 20 years, I hope that we'll actually have a cabinet that will truly reflect the face of the city.
There's been a lot of talk about that. You know, certainly throughout the mayoral races, the different candidates, they certainly made that a point. I know that now Marty Walsh and John Conley, respectively, they, you know, they talk a lot about that, the importance of diversity, the importance of having a team that's reflective of the city in which we live.
That's true. And then when you think about the city, there's, some of the, you have like 18,000-plus city employees. And clearly, you know, people of color and women make up a vast amount of those positions, the rank-and-file city employees. But when you really look at and dial in on the administration's cabinet, that does not truly reflect the face of city. That was, I was very critical of that when I ran in 2009. I remain critical of that. So my hope is that, again, we get some bright, talented people right here in Boston. No need for nationwide searches.
I agree.
I get very parochial when it comes to that.
You and I both.
Commissioners, superintendents, I think, should come from the ranks. They should come from the neighborhoods of Boston. I just feel strongly about the sweat equity, the institutional experience, the knowledge of our city and our neighborhoods, our history and our future, I think are a big part of that. So my hope is that there's going to be tremendous opportunity for so many people in our city who are either in government now, or who are not in government, partly because they feel that they've been shut out of government, or because they haven't really seen a great opportunity. And I think that if we're able to tap into that skill set.
Renewed interest.
Oh, it's tremendous. It's exciting. And it's, and the other part of this is that it's an opportunity for the city council to almost reinvent itself. And I think with experienced members of the council that have exercised independence in the past to help guide other members of the council, but also to bring, to share experiences with the new members, there's going to be at least three, maybe four, new members of the city council. So that said, I think that this is an interesting time for the city council to play an equal partner role in city government, a role that it hasn't played in close to 20 years.
Let me talk about a point, like, let's expand upon the idea of diversity. Because diversity is one of those buzzwords. It's one of those words that make people kind of just sit up and say, yes, yes, yes. So everybody, regardless of where they're at in the political spectrum, you know, they always say, well, diversity is a good thing. And in terms of, you know, skin tone, ethnic background, everything really, even thought, diversity of thought. It's, but for you, you know, it's nothing new. I noticed even from your first campaign to get on the city council, you were actually successful because you were able to meld different communities, and you were able to kind of bring in a lot of people and give them a voice and get them excited about where you wanted to help take the city. What would you say about that?
Well, I mean, obviously, I'm a stickler for, and I look at really my staff, my staff, all of my council staffs over the years have been reflective of the face of the city, and my campaign staffs. But I'm a stickler for quality. Like, I want the best person for that job, regardless of race, regardless of gender. And fortunately, we're so rich in talent in Boston, you know, think about, you know, we boast of the best colleges, universities, hospitals, financial service industry. I mean, we just have tremendous talent. Then you think about all of our neighborhoods and the value that they add. And we also know that, obviously, diversity is a great strength for Boston.
Absolutely.
So you don't really need to look hard to find both talent and diversity. So that's never been a challenge for me. I have a reputation of, and I think that in order to be an at-large city councillor, you have to demonstrate your ability to represent the entire city.
I think so too.
All of Boston's neighborhoods. I've had the ability to build bridges, to build coalitions, to reach out across my base in my community of South Boston to connect with folks.
From your first campaign, yeah, right.
And at the end of the day, it was very simple for me. Obviously, I grew up in a different city here than I think a lot of other people did in terms of an older generation. But I recognize that no matter what neighborhood you're from, everyone wants the same thing. They want good, quality schools for their children. They want safe and clean streets. They want economic opportunity.
Absolutely.
And they want to make sure that they have a city that works for all of its people, not just some of its people. And I think if you can connect with folks on those levels, and at the end of the day, with respect to their elected officials, when they call their elected official, they want a return phone call back.
That's always nice, or an email.
Yeah, when they invite their elected official, they want their elected official to show up. It's that type of partnership that you need to do. It's not just that you're a certain color or a certain gender. If you're an elected leader, people expect to see you. They expect to hear from you. They expect a return. So, and I've been a stickler for folks that call my office, they get a prompt, appropriate phone call back.
And they should, because...
I pride myself on constituent service work.
Because members of the city council, you are the first board of call. So I think that's really how it should be. Now, I just want to talk about, just like kind of one last point about diversity. I do like how you believe very strongly in diversity. Again, I mean, you know, third time saying this, but I mean, it really must be underlined from your very first run, you've really kind of advocated for this. This isn't you just kind of banging the drum because it's, you know, the hot term, the hot buzzword. But I like that you don't believe in diversity just for the sake of diversity. You know, you want quality too.
Oh, you have to have it. And as a city councillor, you're really only as good as the people around you.
Sure.
And so your staff, and again, it's largely driven, your council work is largely driven by constituent service work. And so when you have a constituent, no matter what neighborhood, like, when that phone rings, I don't ask you what neighborhood you live in, what your race, or what your gender, what your sexual orientation is. You're a constituent. I work for you. As your citywide city councillor, I work for you. And so those phone calls that come in, everyone gets serviced and treated with dignity, respect, and treated as if anyone, as if my, a family member was calling. That's just how it is in my office. And by setting that type of tone, we've received, you know, great response across the community when I decided to run back again, hearing people saying, thank you for running again, good to see you back at it again. Always had a great response and a great rapport with your office. And that is really reflective of the staff. And I've always had tremendous staff.
You have.
I know you've met a number of them over the years.
Absolutely.
But just good, decent people that care deeply about their neighborhood, our city. And again, it was, I always had a very diverse staff. So I always focus on, I want just good, quality, decent people, first and foremost. That's the priority. But again, you don't have to look far in our city because we get a great talent pool.
And you're not just kind of talking just to talk, because, you know, I've also been with you on the trail, and I see the response that you get regardless of the neighborhood. And I'm actually, I am impressed, and I'm not easily impressed.
Republicans can even call my office, and they get a written phone call back.
He's saying this, guys, because he knows I'm Republican.
Because it is a nonpartisan race, and it's a nonpartisan. Again, I work for everybody. So whether you're Democrat, Republican, Independent.
No, absolutely.
So it goes across political boundaries too. At the end of the day, we're all Bostonians.
No, absolutely.
And that's how I treat this, being an at-large council, and that we, and there's also times that we may disagree.
Sure.
I'm still going to call you back. I'm still going to return that phone call because that's my responsibility. I have a responsibility to explain to you my position or the vote that I took. I think that you deserve that much, just as a resident and a taxpayer. That said, my hope is that maybe we're disagreeing on a particular issue now, but that we may agree on another issue, and that you'll feel comfortable enough to reach out to me and to call my office, because nothing's going to be held against you because we didn't agree on an issue a month ago, or six months ago, or three years ago.
Right, and that ultimately...
And that's a big part of that.
Right, and ultimately, you know, the realization that we want what's best for the city. And so even though we might have the different approaches, there is going to come a time where we can most definitely work together and realize our goals.
And I tell people in my office, and particularly the staff, they'll tell you, you know, you go up to the zoning board of appeals is a perfect example. And the expression is, and other councilors have said this before, and I think Brian Honan, the late, great Brian Honan, who I had the honor and privilege of serving with, would oftentimes come down to his staff basically and say, you know, how many votes did I lose today? You know, because you go up to the zoning board of appeals, and you have neighbor A versus neighbor B, and you have to stand on your two feet and take a position, either for or against. And so based on sort of that theory of the zoning board of appeals, and then other ordinances and legislation that comes before the city council, the policy in my office is that, you know, every day is a new day. Everyone gets a clean slate. So if you have a disagreement with a policy issue, or a disagreement with a particular constituent, we're always looking for the next opportunity to serve people, because that's the role of the city council.
And that's, and that's an important point. You're watching Bostonian Wrap. My name is Rachel Meiselman. If you caught the first part of the show, thank you so much, and thank you for continuing to join us as we talk with Michael Flaherty, who is a candidate for an at-large seat on the Boston City Council. So before we went to break, we were talking a lot about diversity, which I think is an important thing. You were also talking about how you are willing to work really with anyone, because you see that very much as your job. And I mean, I have to say that, you know, because we are, you know, the same age, and we grew up in the same city, you know, I, people have certain ideas about other people. People have ideas about you if you come from South Boston. There are all these, you know, these ideas that come, oh, you're parochial, that you're narrow-minded. And I just, I think that that's unfair. Because I look at someone like you, and it's really incredible how well you know the city, how well you know the different communities. Now, of course, maybe it's just a Boston thing, because they have ideas about people regardless of the neighborhood they come from. I mean, that's Boston. Oh, you come from West Rockspire, you're a snob. Oh, you come from West, you know, Southie, oh, you're a little narrow-minded. Oh, you come from Jamaica Plain, oh, you're a little, you know, so, so on and so forth. But what I'm saying is, you, you're a proud Southie native, and you should be. But when you go to work, you make sure that people know that you know the issues of each community, and you really do. You know, talk about that. I mean, is that, I mean, do you, is it about doing research? Is it about having your staff really kind of, really kind of monitoring what's going on? Is it about going out to different businesses, going out to the residents? Tell me.
Sure. Well, and obviously, I was born in public housing, so the expression we used to use to compare was either lace curtain Irish or two toilet Irish.
Sure.
But I think, obviously, the preliminary vote, I think, spoke volumes in terms of my ability to reach out across the city. We got a great preliminary vote. I think people know me. They know that I know the city, and they know I know the issues. And given that there's going to be some uncertainty, although there is excitement with the new administration being ushered in, I think they like the idea of someone that has the experience and that skill set to sort of keep things on track with respect to the city councils. That was a big factor in terms of, I think, the vote. I mean, there was a 255 precincts, I want to say, and 155 or 160 of them, I finished either first or second, so across the city.
You did really, really well. It must have been very exciting.
It was great. It was obviously great to see. Yeah, it was great to see the results coming in, not just from my base areas of people that sort of know me the best where I grew up, and where my family and friends are, and where I went to school. But for a Southie kid to win every single precinct in East Boston was a thrill. And also to do very well across the city, particularly in the community of color, recognizing, again, my efforts around improving the quality of our Boston Public Schools, my efforts around crime and violence, particularly youth violent crime, my issues around substance abuse and treatment, and also my efforts around the Boston residency job policy, pilot reform, and quarry reform. So, and also my efforts with respect to the LGBT community. You're looking at the very first citywide elected official that supported marriage equality, long before other elected leaders went in that direction. Some were still grappling with domestic partnership and civil union, so...
I should say, I was aware of that. I, you know, I'm doing my research. I did see that. And I think that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not just saying this because I know you, but I actually think that you're very impressive on a number of levels. Because it's very easy to say, oh, well, I support equality, or I support this, or I, you know, and these are things that like now, people would say, oh, yes, absolutely. But even, I mean, we take it for granted that, you know, even 10 years ago, maybe the attitude wasn't necessarily the same. So I know that you were an early champion of equality for the gay and lesbian transgender communities.
I tend to obviously walk the walk, and having a personal experience, having a cousin that was brutally murdered because he was sort of involved in living a sort of a closeted lifestyle, and had to, couldn't be openly gay around here in 1994, and chose to go down to Florida, and then as a result of that, we lost him. We lost someone that is very near and dear to me. So that sort of helped shape my opinions with respect to the LGBT community, and they can count on me as obviously a longtime supporter, and I can also count on them. It's always been a two-way street with the community, and they get out there, they're very active and involved in my campaign. There's our other organizations and other groups and other entities that have developed rapport with, I get great, a great core and following in the Vietnamese community, in the Russian community.
Yes, I know that. I've noticed that, yes.
And the Haitian community, and the Gavertian community. So again, they know me from positions I've taken. They know me, I've stood with them in certain situations that have occurred in our city. And they can count on me as a friend, someone that's going to be very receptive to calling them back, being very receptive to showing up, and being very receptive to sticking my nose in when they need someone to stand with them. And so that, and as a result of which, when you go to campaign events, or when you participate in some of the cultural festivities and the parades in our city, you see the response, and you see the folks that often join in with me. It's, they're true, genuine, sincere relationships that were built over a period of time, and built around trust and confidence and respect. And as a result of my tenure on the council and having access to, being in a position to help make decisions that impact their community, they've been very responsive. And so for me, it's sort of, it's a natural thing. I mean, you, if you grew up in my household, you treated people the way you want to be treated. If you grew up and spent any time...
It's kind of a golden rule, isn't it?
Yeah, if you spent any time in my grandmother's house, you know, we used to call my grandmother's house, it was like the League of Nations, with my grandfather being a taxi driver, and a lot of his colleagues in the taxi industry would come through his house, either on a break, or to visit him, or to visit down my grandmother's. And so again, that's, that's sort of the foundation and been the backbone of the entire Flaherty family. So I've been the beneficiary of growing up in a great household, and having great aunts, uncles, and cousins, and that have been in public service. They've given a lot of time and energy and effort to helping others. And so that's sort of been my background and upbringing. And I know my grandparents wouldn't have it any other way, my parents wouldn't have it any other way.
Sure.
And that's the way that I'm raising my children, raising four children in the city of Boston. My children attended the Boston Public Schools. So when I talk about the Boston Public Schools, I talk about it because I'm a consumer.
Right.
My children went to the Murphy School, and they went, well, two with the Murphy, two with the Perry, and then all three of them ended up over at the Murphy. So very involved in the quality of education in our public school system.
Let me, no, that's, I think that's wonderful. I think when people make the decision to live their lives, build their lives in Boston, and then raise a family, I think that's a wonderful, I mean, for obvious reasons, being a Bostonian myself, I think that's a wonderful thing.
I get very parochial too, because obviously, I'm from the city, and I'm raising my children in the city, and so I'm all about the city, and hopefully providing the same opportunities that I was able to have as a kid.
Oh, absolutely.
And even, hopefully, even better for the next generation. And what I see sort of happening today, I mean, I see a disconnect on a number of levels. If you think about sort of crime and violence, the city of Boston tends to treat it as a summer problem, and we know it's a year-round problem. So when we're talking about jobs for our youth, it can't just be about summer jobs, it's got to be about year-round jobs.
No, absolutely.
I mean, there's just pieces that you see that we miss.
It's kind of silly, I mean, the idea of, you know, just summer jobs, so what do we give in hope for only three months of the year?
Yep. And even that, it's, they really don't, they don't start until the Monday following July 4th weekend, so it's really condensed, and we need to do a better job, obviously, of reaching out for our youth. But you look at, we have, we have tremendous resources in our city. I mean, we get, we get great parks, we get great ballfields, we have great community centers, making sure that they're properly...
The Sister City Program.
The Sister City Program, which you're very familiar with, which is a great program. All great things happening. What I tend to think happens in Boston, and we just had this discussion the other day, we were over at Project Place, and we talked about that, I think, and I should digress for a minute.
Sure, please.
I think that there's, I think there's a lot of job opportunity out there. But we're not, the different organizations are not talking to one another. And I think particularly with our youth, I think there's lots of opportunity out there.
Absolutely.
We get a lot of natural strengths, but we have, again, groups and organizations just not talking to one another. And I was at a senior event today where there's lots of programs for our seniors, but somehow they don't, they don't know about them. And I made the analogy that particularly around election time, we know how to get in touch with our seniors. I mean, they're getting robocalls, they're getting direct mail.
They must be, I'm sick of this already.
Oh, yeah. You know, it's true. And they do get like that, because there's so many candidates.
That's what I say, I'm sick of it.
Twelve, narrow, 19.
Because I get a few myself.
At-large. But I made the analogy that, you know, when the city of Boston wants to connect with people, they find a way to do it. If there's going to be a heat wave, they send out, you know, phone calls to tell everybody that, you know, it's going to be hot for the next few days, you know, make sure that you stay cool, drink plenty of fluids, and check on your elderly neighbors. When we're going through the winter, and there's going to be a stretch of, you know, maybe it's a blizzard, or it's going to be a, you know, sort of an arctic cold front for several days, you get a phone call basically saying that, you know, it's going to be very cold, you know, again, stay warm, check on your neighbors. And when kids go back to school, you remind them about summer reading, and you remind drivers to be cognizant of the fact that there's going to be lots of kids out there.
Well, what I'm wondering about, all the things that you're saying, I mean, they're wonderful. They're great things that make for an effectively well-run city. An effective management of the city, I should say, a well-run city. But what I'm wondering is if maybe, if we, if we could only strengthen the neighborhoods, because I feel like over time, Boston's very much a city of neighborhoods, as I was saying earlier. You know, we have something to say about this city, and this neighborhood, and that neighborhood, and, you know, there's something negative we'll say about every neighborhood. I mean, that's, that's being, you know, that's part of being a Bostonian. But having said that, there's a great deal of pride in each one of these neighborhoods. And I'm wondering what you would like to do to kind of strengthen these different neighborhoods, because I think that a lot of the services to which you referred, I think that more people would know about them. You know, say, a cooling center in East Boston, cooling center in JP. If people had stronger ties within the community, they would know about these different services.
And that's a great point. Obviously, we are a city of neighborhoods. I think it's more than appropriate to highlight the successes of a particular neighborhood. I also know that what works, say, in one neighborhood doesn't necessarily work in another neighborhood because of just the dynamic of a particular community. But I think by highlighting the successes of particular neighborhoods, may either allow highlighting the successes of particular neighborhoods may either allow other communities to either replicate that success or to sort of maybe embrace it but put their own twist on it and maybe call it something else or they may have a different dynamic to it.
Do you think-
I think it's more in terms of the collaboration piece but also the communication piece. And so, I think naturally everyone says, oh, just wwwcityofboston.gov.
Yeah.
And we were in front of a group of seniors today who don't have access to computers and materials like that. And I also think another piece particularly for our seniors is the transportation piece.
Okay.
You know, I'll give you my neighborhood, Castle Island is just, it's a beautiful resource.
Isn't it just?
A lot of our seniors who grew up in the community and who are now, you know, older and not able to drive or get around as much, but they're almost now isolated in their own homes, there is a program, it's called the Southie Shuttle, which I would hope would be replicated across the city, particularly for seniors.
Okay.
And we talked about it at a forum today whereby the, all the local businesses, they basically fund this transportation program. And it's the restaurants and the taverns and the cafes and the barrooms where they want people to come and spend their hard-earned money, but they also want them to get home safely. So they all pitch in and they have this shuttle-
That's lovely.
-that runs to get folks down to the restaurants so that they don't have to worry about parking space or worry about, you know, driving while, you know, while drinking. And, but during the day, on the off-peak hours, they provide that shuttle service free of charge for our seniors.
Well, it also allows people to interact and people to know each other.
Huge. And most people will just go out to Castle Island, they'll just go to Broadway, they'll go shopping, it's a great thing.
I love Castle, I could talk about Castle Island all day.
And that should happen across the city.
We have as a guest tonight, Michael Flaherty, he is running for the at-large seat, one of the four at-large seats in the Boston City Council. Talking about strengthening communities, you were talking about different services, particularly one in Southie, a shuttle, and you were talking about how you would like to see that idea replicated throughout the city.
Because we talked to a lot of folks from different neighborhoods and particularly our seniors, because public transportation is limited, because the cost of the ride has almost doubled, looking to get out of their homes, to shop locally, to dine locally, to maybe go to a local park. So, the shuttle in my neighborhood was obviously sponsored by the local businesses to kind of get customers down.
What a great idea, a great partnership.
Yep, and during the off-hours, it's now available for seniors to call in and the shuttle guys are great and, you know, they make them cookies and give them tips and stuff, but, but it's really for the off-peak hours, it's for our seniors and if we could replicate that program, because all too often you get across the city and because seniors are either being isolated in their home or they don't have transportation, access to sufficient transportation to satisfy their needs, that would sort of fill a void. But, but you had referenced, obviously, that, you know, we have successes that are happening in certain neighborhoods and, you know, making sure that people are aware of some of those successes and-
Absolutely.
It is a unique fabric for our community. We get out there pretty often because there's so many festivities and parades.
Sure.
So being a citywide council, you have access to many different cultural events. So you actually get across the city-
The parades are wonderful, aren't they?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great time. And so, as a result of that, you get to get into communities, you get to hear and get your finger on the pulses to what's happening there and as, obviously, you get to sort of experience a different feel and a different vibe from neighborhood to neighborhood to neighborhood. So, I think our community centers are also another opportunity to sort of be a resource. What I would like to see, we have great community centers, but I'd like to see, you know, more consistent and better programming. So it's one thing to have an actual facility, a physical structure that is called a community center, but if you don't have programming, you don't have activities going there, then it's really not living up to, you know, true capacity and true usefulness. And so, I think my hope is with a new set of ears and eyes and a renewed focus, particularly around our community centers, with the new administration, with the new mayor coming and working with the council, I'd like to see us maybe take our community centers to the new level, not just for our seniors, but for our youth and-
Absolutely. So people, you know, they'd have a place where they could kind of congregate and share stories about the neighborhood and get to know each other and build friendships and partnerships, a real sense of community because I think that Boston is as only strong as the different neighborhoods are.
Yep.
Now, you were talking about how your children are in the Boston Public School system and I would think that, you know, putting a real focus on our schools would also go a long ways into strengthening the different neighborhoods.
Huge. Obviously, my children attended the Perry and the Murphy School. Murphy School is a K-28 in Dorchester, the Perry is a K-28 in South Boston. And as a result, obviously, the schools, when you think about Boston, again, we boast of the best colleges and universities in the world. When it comes to our Boston Public Schools, we can and must do better. We are the birthplace of public education.
We really are.
Mind-boggling how we have so many underperforming schools, so many kids falling behind, and an achievement gap so wide you could drive a truck through it. So, how we get to the bottom of that, I think we take the budget decisions out of Court Street, put them in the hands of principals and teachers at the school site, it's called school-site budgeting. We need to reduce the class size, we need to extend the school day, and we need to provide art, music, physical education, you know, science and social studies to, and civics-
Oh, our children need to be well-rounded.
To our youth. And so, I think, more recently, we've been teaching to the MCAS test, that's just my, it's sort of my theory, is that we have this high-stakes MCAS test that does a couple things. One, it's supposed to give you information about a particular school district, so particularly Boston. The performance of the MCAS is supposed to be reflective of the entire Boston Public School System, which I don't think is accurate and fair. Two, children need to perform well on these MCAS tests in order to succeed and to graduate or to move on to the next level. So there's sort of a, there's a sort of a high-stakes piece of this. And then, we're then evaluating our teachers on the performance of the MCAS, again, which I just think is a flawed system. So as a result of which, we have teachers sort of tending to teach to the MCAS because that's how they're evaluated. And again, it's a high-stakes test where the microscope and focus is on our entire school district. So, I'd like to kind of get away from that, I'd like to use the MCAS as a barometer. It should not be a criteria to graduation, it should not be a criteria for evaluating teachers, it should not be a criteria for teacher performance and/or compensation because a teacher in one classroom is dealing with a whole unique set of issues that maybe a teacher in another class is not. And these children are coming in, having experienced trauma, having experienced and witnessed domestic violence, they may have abuse or sexual or physical abuse themselves. Some kids come from some variety of socioeconomic backgrounds, some, for some, it's the first student and the first child in their entire family to go to school.
And you want, you want our children to be able, I've said this before on the show, you want students to be able to think critically and you want them to go to school not with this kind of pressure on them, I have to do well, I have to succeed, I have to pass, you know, this test. You also want them to kind of derive a certain amount of joy and pleasure, you know.
Yeah.
Why not? From learning, from picking up a book and reading, not a notebook, a book.
That's true. And for some, I mean, obviously, we all went to school and there was those days where you just dreaded having to go to school because you had a test or you had an essay. But you think about when you go back to school, like there were certain parts of the day or certain parts of the school week, maybe it was gym, maybe it was music, maybe it was art, you know, maybe it was science or social studies. So, there's always something that sort of kept you, kept you, or maybe you were playing sports for your school team.
Or debating.
It could be anything. Or, yep, you could be on the chess team. Whatever it is, you're involved and you're engaged in something that motivated kids to sort of stay involved in school. You had the teacher looking out for you, you had the athletic director looking, you had the coach shade, did you get the homework done? So, we've sort of lost focus on that. So not only are we not having, you know, sort of providing a well-rounded education for our youth, but because we're sort of teaching to this particular test or we're putting this high-stakes emphasis on it, I think we lose a tremendous amount of value in terms of what we're doing. And so, and if you think about education broadly, it's, you know, it's the greatest equalizer.
Absolutely.
You get a great education and you think about kids, so, you know, be, you know, be in this neighborhood, right here where the studio is and, you know, look down the street and you can see Northeastern University, yet most of the kids in this community won't have an opportunity to sit in the classroom at Northeastern. They'll drive by Northeastern, they'll watch and hear about, you know, they'll watch the Beanpot and hear the Huskies playing and they may drive by and see a game going on on one of the fields, you know, over at the Northeastern campus, but have no sense of connection and no real hope to be able to participate.
Not actually going there.
And as a result of graduating from that school, which they have great curriculum over there, along with my alma mater at Boston College and are also the neighbor of BU and so many schools that call Boston their home. And then to talk about like the Innovation District and the new emerging South Boston waterfront and the life science and pharmaceutical industry and-
I mean, I don't see how we can have a healthy community where we have a significant chunk of our population, segment of our population, and they're not accessing these places. So I don't think anyone's talking about giving them places, giving the students places that they don't deserve. We're talking about giving them tools that will-
That's it, tools.
Will enable them to succeed.
True. And I use one, and it's something that I've been talking about, I talked about it for several years, I talked about the mayor's race a few years ago, but my hope is that either John Conley or Marty Walsh, if elected mayor, will embrace this concept, which is a year 13.
Yes, I remember that.
Again, if you don't, if you're not into Latin or Latin Academy or John D. O'Brien, which are our exam schools, and thank God we have them, if you're not in those schools competing at a high level, most likely you're not going to be able to access or get opportunities to compete for some of the great institutions that call Boston their home. And again, short of graduating at the top of your class at some of our high schools, what I would like to do is have a year 13 for serious students and it will be a one-year intense college prep course load with a partnership with our colleges and universities and that could be college professors coming in, it could be graduate students earning, you know, credit towards their teaching degree.
So maybe, like, really kind of reviving the Boston Compact. I remember Rob Quincalvaz talked about that and other people have rightly picked up on it, so maybe something along those lines.
Exactly. And have a full SAT prep course, because I knew when SAT prep courses provided in other public schools or in private schools, you know, it's test-taking skills, it's time management, you know, process of elimination. That could make the difference between 50 and 100 points. It's the difference between a kid getting into a school or not, it's a kid getting into school and possibly getting a college tuition. So, for, again, for serious students that don't have the fortune, or even if they did go to Latin, Latin Academy or John, but if you're a serious student who's serious about going to a good college and you feel that you need one additional year of strict college prep work so that not only you can compete to get into the school, but when you get into the school, you're actually going to be able to stay in the school and not just go for a semester and drop out or go for one year and drop out. And no one ever sort of tabs that. We know, we get the high school kid that gets the diploma and we're just like, wow, we got, you know, he's finally graduated.
No, that's not good enough.
That is not good enough, particularly because those kids are going out into our neighborhoods and our community, they're living here and all this opportunity is happening around all of our neighborhoods.
They need to be able to read, write, do mathematics, they need to be able to think critically, they need to be competitive.
And every year, tens of thousands of students come to Boston-
Yes.
And take advantage of the great education that we're providing our colleges.
But our own children can't.
Our own children have no opportunity to connect in there.
And I'm glad you're stressing that because that's a big problem I have.
That's huge.
And we'll talk a little bit more about this and also we'll shift the focus of the conversation to crime and violence. Thank you so much. You've been watching Bostonian Wrap. My name is Rachel Meiselman. We have been very honored tonight to have as a special guest, Michael Flaherty. He is running for the Boston City Council for one of the four at-large seats. We were talking about education and, as I said, I'm so very glad that you mentioned that our children, not enough of our children are at these Boston universities. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. Don't get me wrong, it's not that I don't want people coming from the outside, in fact, it's an honor that so many people would want to study in Boston, but does it really make sense to have so many Bostonians who are unable to take advantage of the resources that so many other people from outside the city, from around the state and around the country and around the world can?
Tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of students come from all over. It's the, I mean, it's, I get, again, I get really parochial. It's equivalent of having like a new, a brand-new, you know, ballpark or living across the street from a beach or the Crock Center.
Sure.
And the people from the neighborhood can't go there. You know, can you imagine, can you imagine building a brand-new park with brand-new slides and swings and basketball nets and tell the kids from the neighborhood, they can drive by it, they can look at it, they can watch other people playing in it.
They can wear a T-shirt that says Harvard and Northeastern.
They can hope to maybe get on, but really get, have no real shot at getting on to that playground or to that ball field.
I gotta tell you, it breaks my heart.
It's just unbelievable. And so, we have great natural strengths in our city. Clearly, academics is a big piece, again, birthplace of Boston, of public education, home to best college universities in the world.
You can say it, we're an intellectual mecca.
Yep, yep. And there's tremendous, tremendous, you know, capital, intellectual capital in the city. And as a result of having these great institutions, we have other great opportunities, again, life sciences, pharmaceutical, innovation, financial services, I mean, all of those major companies call Boston their home because of the close nexus to some of the brightest minds in the world, but yet, again, there's a disconnect. And I just want, and again, there's, there's great people that do tremendous work. John Tobin, my former colleague, who's now working over at Northeastern, my former boss, Ralph Martin, I mean, so they're doing what they can do to connect, you know, folks in the neighborhood. Boston College, Jack Dunn, actually taught me over at BC High, is actually over there. Eddie King, who had recently retired from BU, was over BU. So you have, and they're all city guys and they're cognizant of the fact that they want-
To give back.
Yeah, so there's, so I want to make sure, I preface it with that, clearly, I would like to see more kids from the neighborhoods of Boston going to these great institutions. We need to do our job in preparing them.
Absolutely.
You can't put someone in a situation and set them up for failure. If they're not ready academically, it's just not going to work out. They may last a semester, they may get through one year, but that's not going to be good enough. So, we need to do our part as a city-
And it really is.
Providing, you know, preparing and providing opportunity.
It really is an issue.
Huge. And know that there is a willingness from not only these institutions, but also from the people that work at, John Nucci over at Suffolk, former city council, he gets it.
He's doing a lot, yes.
So, I mean, I can, I could go around every, every school and I can tell you exactly sort of who the president/CEO is, who is running their government affairs, who's doing their community outreach, and there's clearly a willingness for them to provide opportunity. But we also need to make sure that the children, folks from Boston are up to snuff and can actually cut the mustard with respect to the academics and never-
What I wanted to say is that you have a lot of students and they maybe go to a community college and just, you know, piggybacking on what you said, I mean, maybe they'll get in, but maybe they'll last only a semester then or a year. But I know a lot of students, you know, whether it's at a community college or a four-year college, and they have serious problems writing, putting together basic sentences. And so, I feel like we are way beyond lip service and platitudes and just kind of ideas that don't have any substance behind them. I think we owe our children so much more, but I wanted to-
Which actually starts with, if I may interject-
Please.
It starts with educating our children earlier-
Sure.
And then recognizing those signs very early on, first, second grade, and getting and wrapping the services around that student. So whether it's, you know, an issue around arithmetic or if it's reading and writing, it could be an ESL issue or it could be, you know, it could be an achievement gap issue, it could be a socioeconomic issue, there could be dysfunction in this child's home. But at a very early age, kindergarten, first, second grade, teachers can recognize and can pick up on, and I think that at that point right there, we had to put the brakes on, wrap the appropriate services around that kid in the first, second, third grade and help sort of write that chip, if you will, as opposed to just letting this kid get from the first to second, and all of a sudden they're in the sixth grade and they can't do basic arithmetic, they can't read and write. That doesn't serve anybody good. So I think we need to have a sort of a focus on getting our kids into the classroom early, K zero, pre-kindergarten for all of our residents.
And your background too, your legal background, so I think you were assistant DA.
Yep.
So, and I've done a lot of work over in Dorchester in probation and I gotta tell you that you can't wait until the child is 12 years old, you know, in terms of education and support on a variety of different levels. So I agree with you, you have to get them when they're really young. I do want to talk though, a little bit about violence because a lot of people, regardless of the community that they come from, the neighborhood that they call home, it is something that's on their mind. I mean, we've talked about strengthening the neighborhoods and the school system and these are different reasons why people would actually stay. But safety is also an issue that is the difference between people staying put or picking up sticks and leaving.
It's a big part and obviously it dovetails with education as well. Spoke to a woman recently that had, speaking of parks, had a brand-new park built across the street from her home, but she loads her children up into her car and drives them over to Billingsfield in West Roxbury because she doesn't feel safe in her own neighborhood.
Really?
And she's worried about sort of stray bullets and drive-by shooting, so unconscionable. But it sort of sheds light on the fact that crime and violence is a reality, no matter where you live in the city. We saw an incident with, in my community, in a relatively short period of time, I think it was 19 hours, three women were viciously assaulted and one was brutally murdered at the hands of one individual. And at the same time, you know, you open up the newspapers and you read about an innocent victim or stray bullet or even it could be someone that's either drug or gang involved, involved in the shooting, but at the end of the day, they all have a mother and they all have families.
Someone who cares.
It's huge. And so I saw, I mean, I recognized it a long time ago, you had mentioned I was a prosecutor, I was an assistant district attorney that worked in East Boston, Charlestown, Ian, Roxbury District Courts. Spent a portion of my time as a juvenile point prosecutor, so not only did I see crime and violence, I saw youth crime, I also saw violent crime and youth violent crime. And common denominators on a lot of the crime is, is lack of education, lack of sort of socioeconomic and job opportunities and also substance abuse, drug and alcohol abuse.
Substance abuse is such a massive problem.
It's a big, it's a common denominator for a lot of the crime happening in our city. And so clearly, we're not going to be able to arrest our way out of the problem. We need to do a better job, we've touched on it, educating our children.
I like that sentence, like if you could repeat that, we cannot arrest our way of the problem.
No, you can't. No, you could put all the police officers in the world out there and clearly, it's nice to see, you know, a strong police presence and we have great men and women work for the Boston Police Department that are working very hard and do tremendous, do a tremendous job in terms of protecting our communities and solving crimes. That said, you know, we need to do a better job in terms of improving the quality of our education. I would like to see, again, more youth workers, more street workers. I think they add tremendous value to reducing crime and violence. I'd like to see actually one male and one female street worker assigned to our Boston Public High Schools, particularly those that experience a number of, you know, a number